Well, hello, everybody and welcome. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to take our role.
Agent.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Henny Keith.
Here.
Ash.
Here.
Ed.
Here.
Willits.
Or present, two absent.
Thank you. We'll move into interim budget changes. Oh, Eric, welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have three interim budget changes for your consideration this afternoon. The first one is in the Housing Projects and Special Activities Fund. It's to purchase property located at 860 West Sherwood for permanent supportive housing. It will be used to house 47 families exiting homelessness. This request is contingent upon council's approval of a purchase and sale agreement at this evening's council meeting. Funding for this particular project was approved as part of, well, funding utilizing, or excuse me, this project utilizing funding that was approved as part of the fiscal year 23 adopted budget. Our second item is for green belt lighting near Willow Lane Road. This project would install lighting along the Green Belt near Willow Lane extending towards Lander Street. Following creation of the fiscal year 24 budget, Valley Regional Transit informed the city that due to route rationalization, other efficiency enhancements, they were not likely to need all of the supplemental funding that was included as part of the fiscal year 24 budget. Thus, that funding is being recommended for use for this particular project. Our third item is a fiscal year 24 item as well. This item would eliminate fiscal year 24 funding for two capital projects. One for police vehicles and secondly, for Public Works Historic Streetlight Replacements. That funding was advanced into fiscal year 23 as part of the August 15th City Council interim budget changes. This item would be the elimination of that funding, basically the second half of that equation. We have staff available. If you have any questions on these items, otherwise be happy to answer anything else you might have.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. First off, on item number three, it's always nice if we can do, when we can do things faster than planned. So kudos to the Police Department and Public Works and glad that we were able to move that money forward. And I just wanted to touch on the other two, VRT, just for council to be aware. VRT is aware of the proposal that we've made, that we invest in safety improvements along the Green Belt at Willow Lane and Lander Street. And so they're aware of this. I just wanted that flag for you. And this is, you know, I walked the Green Belt with staff and then the chief has walked the Green Belt as well in this area. And we'd made a commitment as a council to making some safety investments in and around Willow Lane, the Green Belt around there. And it's interesting when the, when the lights are on at night, it really is dark on the Green Belt. There are big, big berms on the Green Belt that are making lots of places where you just don't have line of sight and then we need lighting down there. And so we decided, given that VRT could wait for some of their funding to put it to good use immediately and to make these investments in Willow Lane. And then, of course, next we'll hear from our housing team in Boise State here too, which I really appreciate about the park apartments.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the interim budget changes as presented by staff.
Second. We have a motion and second, any discussion?
Clark, do you call the role?
Henny Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And next up, we've got Tim Keen and Maureen Brewer to talk about the Lust Street redevelopment. And I'll just, as you're getting set up, I want to thank the full team, everybody from the city of Boise that's in the room and not in the room. The entire team at Boise State that has been a part of this. I'm sure we'll have a couple of items on the agenda. One of them being the agreement that'll guide how we redevelop the entire area with Boise State. And then the other, the, the purchase of the park apartments. And I particularly want to say thanks to the university for that discussion, which we started with full council probably about a year ago, if I remember correctly. And we're so excited to know that we could advance goals that we shared as a community much more quickly. When we looked at how we could actually get more for Boise State, get more for Boise and, and provide families with homes as well. And so really excited to be having this conversation and to have this on the agenda tonight. And thank you. I should say, thanks to the Neighborhood Association as well. You keep reminding me that in this instance, the Neighborhood Association is so supportive of what's being proposed. So thanks, Tim and Maureen.
Mayor, members of council, I'm Tim Keen, Director of Planning and Development Services for the city. I'm here with Maureen Brewer, Director of Housing and Community Development for a brief overview of redevelopment for a block in the Lust District of the city, just south of the Boise River. To your point, Mayor, this is a presentation that is a long time coming. It has been a conversation in the city for quite some time for the city and Boise State to work together on redevelopment of this block and just our investments in general around housing, affordable housing in particular, but working together to make this more lively block, more successful block. Here is an aerial of the Lust District and identified in a black dashed border our properties owned by the city of Boise and Boise State University. It's a total of almost five acres in green, the city land, where currently we have several apartment buildings. In red is a surface parking lot owned by Boise State University. It's an interesting place in the city, which consists of housing, much of it apartments for students. I'm speaking of the Lust District now. There's also retail businesses, including restaurants, offices, other workspaces of other types in this district. The Lust District includes older single story buildings and new multi-story ones. Its main front edge is on Capitol Boulevard and it's adjacent to the Boise River Green Belt and Ann Morrison Park. This is an ideal location for denser mixed income housing, business services and office, including uses that are supportive of life at BSU. After a really significant and successful proposal process, we had multiple submittals in this proposal process. Representatives of the city and Boise State selected Jay Fisher Companies as a private developer partner to redevelop the five acre block. Jay Fisher was chosen for many reasons, among them their commitment to mixed income housing, particularly affordable housing, their track record on that, and also their track record on building well-designed, denser and housing-based mixed use, including, as you all know, a very successful and soon to open mixed income housing project on the bench. The Lust District will benefit greatly from redevelopment of lower, redevelopment of lower density housing and surface parking that exists today to well-designed, more urbane, multi-story buildings with retail, office and apartments. People living here can walk to services, jobs downtown, of course, the Boise State campus and have access to transit service on Capitol Boulevard. Just the kind of place we should be growing denser. For this reason, in the new zoning ordinance, we have zoned this area MX5, which is what downtown is also zoned, which supports the characteristics of redevelopment envisioned for the Lust District. Especially important is a wide range of housing affordability. For decades, the city has had among the lowest price housing in Boise on this block in this area. The mayor mentioned and Eric mentioned in the previous presentation, the park apartments, which is adjacent to this five acre block to the south. The point is that for decades, the city's had among the lowest price housing in Boise on this block, and this will continue to be the case. But redevelopment gives us the chance to add new homes serving a variety of income levels. There is already a predominance of student housing in the Lust District. Redevelopment of this block will serve a diverse demographic, which will make the district more successful. Next, Maureen is going to go through more about the process with Boise State on this block, including the discussions we've had with our existing tenants over a long period of time, so we can address any concerns they have and have been addressing concerns they have early and often.
Maureen. Thanks, Tim. Mayor, Council, Maureen Brewer with Housing and Community Development Division here at the city. So, excuse me, as Tim mentioned, really to make manifest the vision that we all have, the city, Boise State University and Jay Fisher Companies. City staff have been working really diligently on prioritizing the housing of the tenants that currently live at Capitol Campus. So we wanted to make sure as part of this presentation to brief you on those efforts. Tim said it, and as many of you know, the city currently owns and operates actually 132 units of deeply affordable housing in the Lust Street neighborhood and has done so for 30 plus years. This redevelopment specifically impacts 110 households that either were or are still living at Capitol Campus. So for all intents and purposes, these units, the 110 on the redevelopment parcel itself, and then the 22 others that we have on the parcel next door are supportive housing. Their supportive housing in that the rent has been subsidized and the city is also providing services to these tenants. Most, if not all of these tenants have significant barriers to finding housing with another property owner or manager, which makes our efforts, the city's efforts to relocate tenants all the more important. Huge success so far. And Glenn Keller, that leads our rental housing team until he retires at the end of October. Glenn and his team have moved 73 households out of Capitol Campus already. We will continue to fill as many vacancies as possible within our own portfolio for what is, for what are these current voluntary transfers before taking from the waitlist, a lengthy one that we maintain. Then for any household that has to or may move outside of our portfolio, we'll be working closely with Jay Fisher and a relocation specialist that they're in the process of hiring now. We anticipate that some tenants may have to move outside of our portfolio and that they will be eligible for certain benefits and we have budgeted for that. So turning them to the, to the university park apartments, which is also, Tim said, this is the other really exciting part about this overall project and partnership. In part because deeply affordable and supportive housing has been part of the fabric of the Lust Street neighborhood for so long. One of the city's goals in partnering with the university on this redevelopment project was to continue to offer supportive housing in the area. So if we're moving, relocating 110 units of supportive housing, where in the neighborhood can we continue to offer at least some of that in the park apartments is that site. It sits adjacent to the redevelopment site. As Eric mentioned, during the IBCs, the city is seeking to purchase these 47 units. They're made up of mostly two bedrooms, but a handful of three bedroom units for $8.14 million from Boise State to create additional units of permanent supportive housing for families that are exiting homelessness. And this is also done in partnership with our Path Homes Campaign to End Family Homelessness. The park apartments will provide a housing opportunity for families who need deeply affordable housing and who will benefit like our current tenants have from a variety of case management services. And they're from nonprofit partners that you all are familiar with, such as the Housing Authority and Catch. The city of Boise will take possession of the apartments in summer of 2024. That's in an effort to maintain the current level of student housing for the university until additional student housing is brought online in this area. And then families will be able to call the park apartments home in late fall, early winter of 2024. The other note I wanted to just be sure to make is that the purchase of the park apartments also complements the Dedicated Units Program that our Path Home has been implementing, where in which we are asking property owners to dedicate 1% of their inventory to households exiting homelessness. So we've set a really ambitious goal of 300 units dedicated to families with children, another 200 units for adult only households, really using that notion of a scattered site model, where in which housing of this nature is integrated into neighborhoods across the city and creating housing choice for families. I am going to turn your attention primarily to the bolded section of this slide. As the mayor alluded to, we have been working on this in earnest on this partnership for well over a year, if not much longer. But just wanted to draw your attention to, to what's in bold. So the Joint Powers Agreement, the Park Apartments Purchase and Sales Agreement and the Park Apartments Lease Agreement were approved by the State Board of Education last week. Those three agreements plus the pre-development memorandum of understanding will be on consent agenda this evening for council's consideration. And then just a kind of launch pad from where we go from here. We will start to enter into that design concept kind of underpinned by public engagement and community outreach from now until the end of the calendar year, at which point we're hoping we'll be in a good enough spot to move forward with a preferred design and then can spend the bulk of next calendar year so well into 2024 on the design and entitlement process with, again, a pretty ambitious goal of being ready to break ground towards the end of next year. Turn it back over to Tim for just the last couple of slides and then we can take questions.
Just to, just to conclude the presentation part of this. So one thing that, that through that proposal process, we had multiple development teams submit on this. And again, to the point of why BSU and the city chose Jay Fisher, Jay Fisher, and we're very excited about this. It's important that the city and Boise State University, we collectively understand how important it is for us to demonstrate the quality of things that we want in Boise on the site. And in this block, this is a very prominent location on our main street, Capitol Boulevard. It's a location where we should be expecting the highest quality in terms of design, both what happens within the block and how it engages with what's around it. This is, of course, a street in the Lust District here with, on the right apartments that we own and on the left, other private businesses. And, and so we, to Maureen's point, this is through that proposal process, we selected Jay Fisher, but excited about getting into the public realm and discussing this from now and through the end of the year and into next year as we fine tune the design of this, because all the discussions among the team, which includes Boise State and the city and Jay Fisher have been collectively having such high expectations about what we achieve here and that this redevelopment of this important block demonstrates all that we expect of housing affordability in the city and the quality and, and sustainability of what we build in Boise. So with that, that's a conclusion of the presentation and Maureen and I can answer questions as needed.
Madam Mayor, thank you, Tim and Maureen. That was great. I was just curious, you mentioned earlier, Maureen, in terms of the trying to time it so that we ensure that we are able to support Boise State and their housing needs for their students as well. Can you talk to me just a little bit more about what that looks like and where those students will be relocated to?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Henny Keith, I might invite Drew Alexander to come speak to that. I don't want to speak on behalf of Boise State, but it is my understanding that there is additional student housing exclusively dedicated to students coming online in the immediate adjacent area that they expect to be online sometime next year, so that they'll have a net gain of student housing and won't actually be losing units. And then I'm going to let Drew correct me.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Name is Drew Alexander. I'm the Associate Vice President for Campus Operations at Boise State. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Keith, Maureen's exactly right. There's an adjacent project that's currently under construction. The Boise State will be master leasing and that will be expected to be occupied for the upcoming fall of 24 semester. That is going to provide us the occupancy that we need to keep our numbers stable and also will be a net gain for the university. And also very soon we'll be breaking ground on an on-campus first year student housing facility adjacent to the library that will bring 450 beds to campus. So all part of a much kind of larger housing plan for the university.
That's great. Thank you, Drew.
Madam Mayor, if there aren't any more questions, I guess I just have a couple of comments and compliments. I want to say thanks to all the folks who've been involved in this project over the years, really this last few years, this last year, and our staff kind of bringing this to the finish line. This idea of collaboration with Boise State and that property has existed, you know, since I moved into the Lust Street almost 16 years ago. And Drew, I know that you've been there for almost every single one of those meetings along the way. And I know that so many staff members here, past staff members have as well. I also want to pay a compliment to Glenn, who's working really hard with the tenants over there to make sure that they get to the right spot. I got to be part of a great conversation yesterday with, with Jerry, who is a success story. You know, Jerry is someone who exited homelessness and now is fully employed at the, at St. Luke's and, you know, showed up as a hero like all of our other employees at St. Luke's during the pandemic and has become an absolutely incredible community member and contributor to our community. I know that you're going to find him a good place to live and everybody else a good place to live. And I know that there's more success stories to come from the folks that will find a permanent home in this neighborhood. And I will speak on behalf of the Neighborhood Association in an area that feels like kind of my home neighborhood. I spend more waking hours there than I do at home. It's exciting to think about families in this area. And it's exciting to think about what the opportunity with affordable housing and families and the resources that are available in this neighborhood and how it's going to change our city, how it's going to change this neighborhood and how it's all going to be for the good. A lot of different pieces of the puzzle went into play to kind of get this done. And I just want to thank everybody for being a part of it. I'm excited that it's coming onto our agenda tonight and was really honored to be there with the mayor and the staff that really got this over the finish line yesterday. So thank you.
Thank you both. All right, Haley, got an update on the recycled water program. I got to say thanks to Haley and her extended family who was at the meet the mayor yesterday. We had a meet the mayor out at the water pilot project at Micron. It was hot.
It was hot.
It was so hot. People from Boise came and had so many great questions. They were super interested in the work that Haley and her team are doing. And then they all stayed for the tour. And so thank you for taking the time to do that and making, I kept thinking like this is STEM in action, making STEM accessible to so many Boisians that out of curiosity came out to the pilot project last night.
Yeah, thank you for having me, Mayor and Mayor, Members of Council, excited to be here. By way of just a really brief introduction, Haley Faulkner, I'm the Environmental Manager in Public Works. In that role, responsible for our long-term strategic planning for water renewal, the artist formerly known as wastewater, our capital planning in that, our water quality work kind of outside of the fence of those facilities up and down the river, and then our new recycled water program. So really excited today to get to talk with you about the recycled water program and hear some of your questions. So quick update on the program, not diving into all of the details, share a little bit about where we're headed and then certainly plant the seed for some of the support that's needed to keep this moving. But this is a really exciting time in public works and for the city as it relates to this water work. But I wanted to start a little bit like, why are we talking about recycled water? When we did our utility planning process that finished in 2020, we heard pretty resoundingly from the community that we have a precious water supply here in what we collect and treat at our water renewal facilities and an opportunity for us to put that to better use. And so the why behind this work is our ability to preserve that water and keep it local. We heard that continuously. Right now it goes in the river and goes downstream, but we have an opportunity here to create a drought-proof water supply. We receive that water 24/7 and as we're able to purify that and put it to use, we can kind of take on the resiliency that's needed against kind of future drought and climate change needs. And this is all really a reflection of what we've heard from the community in that five-year utility planning process and those thousands of touchpoints, but also in this recycled water program work where we continue to talk with the community and connect with them on these various issues to make sure we're headed in the right direction. And a few that I'll highlight, certainly we continue to hear the Boise River is of utmost importance and protecting and enhancing that is, is critical. But kind of jumping down a little bit to better utilizing our water resources and really finding a way for us to create the right water for the right use. And in this case, can we create a water that allows us to protect our drinking water supplies by producing a water that can be used for other areas? And so just kind of sharing the timeline, I guess, in some ways and pictures, what started as this city and community focused utility planning process that said all new capacity that the city builds will be recycled water. So as we grow and we invest in that growth, we're also going to be investing in recycled water in our ability to produce something out of that that we can put to beneficial use that supports economic development. So that was kind of the outcome of that planning process where we are today is, is getting after it. We are excited to share some of that progress. We've got infrastructure starting with our advanced water treatment pilot and we're out talking to the community about what success will look like by kind of having a recycled water product to use by 2029. And so today, while we won't be talking about the full breadth of things, wanted to share one of the success stories of the progress that we've made so far in the couple of years of the program and really focus in on the advanced water treatment pilot as kind of that cornerstone of work that we're doing now and how that ties into other areas of our work. So when we talk about pilot testing in doing that community conversation yesterday, recognize that that's a phrase we use pretty easily and don't really talk about what that means. And what that looks like for us is really small scale testing of technologies to understand their performance and reliability. In this case, we're treating 40,000 gallons per day compared to our current 30 million gallons per day. So it is smaller in scale, but it's big enough that we're able to get good information out of that for the program. And kind of the what and where of it, the pilot is located in Micron's parking lot. They're really the kind of a large user that we're looking at for this recycled water program to start with as we collect water from business and commercial entities, treat it to a high level and then either return it back to those businesses or to groundwater recharge. They've been a tremendous partner in this. And then what the pilot actually looks like, the bottom right photo there is one of three trailers that we have that houses four advanced water treatment technologies. So we've got these housed in trailers and can move that flow in a few different ways, but this is kind of what it looks like. Sort of one trailer. But wanted to share a little bit about the objectives. Why invest in pilot testing at all as the basis of this program? Why not jump kind of right into the solutions? And there's several reasons. The first and maybe very easy one to connect with is the water quality data. As we are able to test that performance of the technology through each of those steps, we'll be able to come back here and out to the community and say, here's how it's performing. Confidence, as the mayor mentioned, our ability to have people out there and really see the technology. It's not big tanks and big buildings. It's very easy to sort of see. And we have kind of cutaways of each of the technologies, so we can show people what's on the inside and talk about how that ties back to the performance. We have a regular meetings with our regulators in the Department of Environmental Quality and the Department of Water Resources. And the pilot provides confidence to them in that process that we've got the data and the reliability in what we're doing, that when they go to permit this, they can see what they can expect from a full-scale facility. But I don't, I also don't want to lose sight of our operators. We don't have any of these technologies currently at our facilities. So for us to be able to invest in our staff and understanding the training and the troubleshooting and how the system works now before we have full-scale facilities is really just critically important. And I suppose it wouldn't be a public works presentation without some numbers. So to share kind of pilot to date, we have invested over 4,000 hours in that exact workforce development that I just mentioned. The people who are out there collecting samples, running the day-to-day operation, we're out there 40 hours a week. We've treated a billion gallons of water so far, collected over 6,000 samples and measuring for hundreds of constituents to really be able to back up this program. And then to the community engagement piece, conducted 25 tours and hosted over 200 people. And those are continuing into the fall as we continue to get people out there and showcase this work. And I just wanted to spend another minute on that. The photo on the right is of the reverse osmosis cartridges. So gives you an idea, kind of you're got a little walking space there and we've got those in there to look at and show. And again, we've got the cutaway of what and how that works. But we're also showing different types of water and having a But we're also showing different types of water and having a conversation about, you know, what that quality looks like and how recycled water fits into the overall ethos of the city in resource recovery. And this has been so far, just a really fun way to get people out there and talk about what we're doing. That's not as abstract as maybe just having the conversation about it. And this will continue into the fall, not just with the community engagement and tours, but also with the, we have a third-party kind of independent science advisory board through the National Water Research Institute, who will come out to the pilot and kind of review our progress to date as that independent body and help continue to inform the long-term nature of the work that we're doing. So, I might just pause there because that was sort of a blast of the pilot information before I get to the what's next and see sort of if there's any questions that you all have, and then I can continue on. Okay. You know, really building on the success of what this, the pilot has given us as far as this foundation to the other areas of work in the recycled water program, we are hearing really positive support from the community, almost how do we get more people out here? We heard that last night. And the community is still really connected to the long-term benefits of having a recycled water program and keeping that water local. One of the benefits of the progress that we've made to date is our ability to sort of focus in on some early design work in fiscal year 24. So, that just means we're moving kind of more quickly in some areas and we're a bit ahead of schedule on some of that design, which is really exciting to keep that moving. And by advancing some of that design work, just in a program that has a lot of investment happening in different places within water renewal, we can optimize our cash flow and levelize our people resources. So, we don't have everyone sort of concentrated at one time and we can spread some of that out. So, a bit of the benefit of kind of where we are in the program and why we're here today, making this request. So, this evening on consent, there's a contract increase in front of you all. And so, why we're here today is give a little bit of background for that. So, we're recommending this contract increase for our program management consultant. What's included in that is kind of the continued and additional tasks that are required to, like as we've defined them through the increased program definition through the work to date. Some of the additional costs for purchased equipment and services that we've seen. And then, of course, the initiation of that detailed design, kind of getting us into those next phases of work. The request itself is an additional $12.4 million as an amendment to that contract, which updates the not to exceed amount to $28 million. So, that's again on consent tonight, but wanted to provide just a little bit of context and maybe celebration about the recycled water program itself. And with that, stand for any questions that you all have.
Madam Mayor, I don't, I don't know that there's a lot of questions up here and I hope that that's not taken as a lack of interest. I think it's more of a a vote of confidence in the work that you're doing. It's been really exciting to see. I apologize for not making it out to a tour yet. I will get out there at some point, maybe when it's a little bit cooler outside. But everyone that I've talked to has gone to a tour, has really enjoyed it, has been impressed. And I do think that it builds confidence, you know, in the different stakeholders as they see the process and it's exciting to see. So, yeah, job well done.
Happy to have you. Well, and Jimmy, even Frank from Georgia's biked all the way out there for the tour. So,
She gone with us.
We're going to remember that too.
Yeah.
So, now you got to do two things. Get out there on your bike. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we've got Chief Niemeyer and Sean Rain. Chief Rain.
Madam Mayor, Council, good afternoon.
Why it's called Squad?
I will. I'm going to, I'm going to talk all about that.
Thanks.
First, let me introduce to my left, Chief Sean Rain. He is the chief with Ada County Paramedics. Sean and I, I'm going to age myself here. Sean and I have known each other and worked together in some capacity for over 20 years. So, a very good relationship and a great partnership, quite honestly. And that's what we're here to talk about. Really quickly, want to introduce Mark Babson from Ada County Paramedics. He was heavily involved in this pilot along with Kelsey Carnoso, who you've, you've met from our office, Assistant Chief Brad Boland. This work was done under his section, a newly promoted Division Chief of Training, Jason Lewis, and then Ryan LaRondo, who's the PIO for Ada County Paramedics. So, originally, when we had this on your calendars, this was meant to be a mid pilot update with a conclusion about six weeks from now. We have concluded that pilot early, so we'll talk a little bit about that. But let me talk about what this pilot is. This was a squad fire department pilot with a BLS ambulance combination pilot. BLS means basic life support. Acronyms, right? I always have to remember that. At, at the state level, when it comes to medical licensure for fire department pre-hospital providers, you have three levels. Basic life support, which are EMTs. Advanced life support, which are EMTs with a couple of added skillsets to them. And then the highest level of licensure in the state are paramedics. In the fire department, we have EMTs and we have paramedics. On the ambulances with Ada County Paramedics, they have EMTs, advanced EMTs and paramedics. So, that's the lay of the land as far as staffing levels and how we, how we provide service to the community. This is a pilot that has been talked about for years. For those of you that have been on council for a while, you heard past President Elaine Clegg talk about alternative response squads a lot. This has literally been talked about for probably 10 to 15 years, never tried and certainly never executed. And so, we have spent 12 months prior to the start of this pilot, planning, talking about what data points, what measurements we want to use to see success, not success. Originally, this was planned for three months, so 12 weeks. Five weeks in, a couple of things happened. A, we had the data that we felt we needed to look at then findings and analyze the data, analyze the surveys, analyze the feedback to then provide some recommendations on what we found. We also had some hiccups. This was not all rainbows and unicorns as we went through the five weeks. Not here today is Sheriff Matt Clifford. He wanted to join us today, but he couldn't. He had another obligation last minute that he had to go to. But he wanted to be here because this was really a three-way partnership between us, Ada County Paramedics, and the dispatch center who takes that 911 call originally, triages and then tries to send the right units. So, if we think about the pilot and the work we did right now in the downtown core, for every medical call we go on, we send either a fire engine or if the fire engine's not available, which in the summertime is, is a pretty high probability right now in the downtown, we send the ladder truck. Those are our two options for sending our responders to that medical call. On the flip side, with Ada County Paramedics, they're sending an ambulance all the time with a paramedic on it. Even though a majority of the time, when we respond, a lot of those calls are basic life support. They just require a basic level of service as opposed to that high-level, advanced level of service. These are critical resources that we want to keep in service as much as we can. So, if you think about it in the terms of sending the right resource to the right call with the right people at the right time, that's what this pilot tested. It was a way to respond that we've never responded before. From the fire department's perspective, and we'll bring this back, we are going to come back the end of October with a full report with the analysis, the white paper and the recommendations and findings. But if we look at our fire department response, we have critical resources that are getting tied up on non-critical type of calls. How do we respond differently tomorrow to those calls? And today is the best time to plan for the future. We've been saying that for quite a while. But we wanted to test the theory first before we came with a recommendation together from the county and from the city perspective to say, we believe this is the right way to respond in the downtown core in the future to add a level of service to ultimately maintain service. So, that's the overview of the pilot. Even though we stopped at five weeks, we felt we had enough information. We're still continuing the work today. Our staffs are working together to develop a white paper on this that will have data, data analysis. We'll have survey results and survey feedback, not only from our providers that were on these units throughout this pilot, but also from the citizens who called 911 that engaged with our crews in this new type of response. So, that feedback is very important to us. We'll have the hospital feedback on, did we deliver the right patient at the right time with the right medical care? We'll have feedback from the dispatch center on how, how was this for you? Was this a better way to send units to really some non-critical calls for service? I'll let Sean talk about the benefits that he has seen already from the pilot from a long-term perspective with Ada County Paramedics and how they might be able to respond differently in the downtown core, augment that service. We know as our call volume rises, we have to do something, but we don't believe the traditional fire service model of let's just build another station in a gap area and add 12 firefighters to that station is necessarily the right move when we can augment that with a two-person squad. And if you think about squad, think of a smaller brush truck-type vehicle as opposed to the large fire engine. Gas mileage is better, the environment is better as a result. We believe this is a better way to augment and respond and still keep our critical resources in service. So, I'm going to turn over briefly to Sean and then we'll wrap up with next steps. Again, this was meant to be a mid, mid-pilot report. We're actually at the end of it, but the work again is still going on. We're going to be coming back at the end of October with that white paper that'll have all the data and we'll have a much, we'll have actually slides and and handouts. I wanted to keep this pretty informal and informative today. But I'll let Sean talk a little bit about what he saw on the county side as well.
Thanks, Chief. For those of you know, Chief Niemeyer and I, we are both huge on collaboration, you know, and working together as agencies to solve some of these problems in a way that we haven't been able to do. And I think a lot of that comes from he and I working for 20-plus years together on things. But you know, immediately what we saw was we were getting the right resource to the right patient at the right time. When we started this project, we were looking at the geographical area. We were trying to keep that encapsulated to the downtown area. The data suggests that our highest percentage of what would be determined as basic life support responses occur in the downtown area. And within the first week, we were really beating up our ambulance crews. The area was just too big. They were running, you know, 17, 19 calls in a 24-hour shift. And so, we dialed that back down to a three-minute service area and kind of hit the sweet spot for that response. That was really the first thing that we learned. But every time we do that, it requires dispatch to go in and make a lot of changes in the software. And we knew during the pilot project, there were some adjustments we needed to make to do the things that we wanted to do. But at the same time, the data suggests, the data that we have shows us what we need to have. Basic life support ambulances are used all over the country. We used a model out of the Fort Worth area that they recently implemented a basic life support ambulance problem or a problem, sorry, ambulance program, not a problem. What I was going to say is that nationally, we are having a problem recruiting paramedics. They're very hard to come by these days. And so, we've got to start looking to the future that if we're not going to have that, that precious resource available, we need to be sending it to the right call when it's needed and addressing the rest of these calls with a basic or intermediate life support ambulance with an advanced EMT that can do that job and do it very well. One of the things that we look at is provider or EMT or paramedic satisfaction along, you know, their own job satisfaction. And up to this point, the EMTs have always been, at least in my department, have always been under the watchful eye of a paramedic. But allowing them to work to their licensure level is going to really improve their job experience. And it's something that we know we can do safely. We've been working with our medical directors. All the protocols are in place to do this and do this safely. And we have the data to back that up. So, from my perspective, it was a success. There are some things that we learned and we'll definitely, when we roll this out in the future, we'll have to make some adjustments. But I think it, it showed that it did what we wanted it to do. So, thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, Council, I know that was very high level and we'll have a lot more details. We come back with the data and that white paper and the slides. But we still wanted to come to you, basically, number one, to inform you that this collaboration was going on, that it was successful, that we continue to find ways together to serve our community in the best way that we possibly can. And again, Chief Sheriff Clifford wasn't able to be here, but there was a lot of collaboration with the dispatch center as well. One of the reasons we decided to keep this on the agenda, even though we knew it was supposed to be a mid-pilot update, is to ask you, is there anything specifically you want to hear from that white paper? We already have a template of how we're going to build that out and the data we're going to look at and the analysis, the findings, the recommendations. But based on the limited information we're able to give you today, if there's something specifically that you'd love to hear about, we'd be happy to include that. So, that's the feedback that you can give me today or later through Courtney.
Madam Mayor. I have a question and I do have a little feedback. Thank you both. That was a great presentation. I'm just curious and if I missed it, I apologize, but you, it seems like you were intending for this to be a much longer study. Did you decide to cut it at five weeks because you got the number of calls you were looking for? And I'm just curious about what, what made your decision to not just kind of keep it at the same timeline that you were originally planning?
Great question. It was twofold, really. One was the data that we were able to achieve in five weeks was robust. But number two, we had some challenges. In order to continue the pilot, we needed some changes made to the CAD system was, which is the software backend of a 911 dispatch system where they take the call, they run it through a series of questions, then they're able to send the resource to a geographical area. The change that we needed to make that the Chief Rain alluded to was to shrink that service area just a little bit because we were too broad in our, in our geographical area. We weren't able to get that done through the dispatch center. They had three other projects going on at the same time. So, that change was not able to be made, which was really impacting the busyness of those units. As Chief Rain alluded to, 17 to 19 calls in a 24-hour period is unsustainable for anybody. And because those changes weren't able to be made, we felt like, let's, let's quit not try and, what's, what's the saying? Pound the square peg into the round hole. We didn't want to do that at the expense of our employees. And so, that was part of the reason. But, but on the flip side, on the positive side, what we saw is what we hope to see. And so, I think you're going to see that in the final report.
Great, thank you. I guess my, and it's maybe a perfect segue is I'm just curious, especially as what you just described in terms of your geographic scope, but then also you mentioned about our shortage on paramedics. I'd love to make sure we see in the report, like, how are we going to effectively be able to use our resources that we have and/or is there an area like paramedics or others that we need to be shoring up and making sure that we are recruiting additional members of those teams to ensure we're able to provide the services that we want in the geographic scope that we're looking at?
Yeah, great. You're asking all the great questions. That, that is a discussion. That will be in the report as well. I will tell you from the Boise Fire perspective, we've had a hold on hiring paramedics for a very long time. A lot of our paramedics that were hired as firefighters are now at the captain level. So, they've risen through the ranks and we haven't backfilled at that lower level, which is really where you need those paramedics to be. So, part of our staffing plan is looking at not just hiring firefighters, but adding that skillset, that, that paramedic skillset as well. We just had a great meeting with CWI on starting a paramedic program at the College of Western Idaho. There is one at the University at ISU right now on a four-year degree program. You've probably heard in the news about the shortage of paramedics in the state, looking at an EMS task force. We're involved in that work as well to ensure that we have a pipeline of future paramedics as the 20-year, 30-year veterans are moving out of that realm. So, the pipeline is an important thing to us and the hiring of that pipeline into our department as well as Ada County Paramedics is very important as well.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if this is a question or if it's a request for the white paper that you were talking about. First of all, great job and great job by everyone who's, who's been involved, both Ada County and Boise Fire. Collaboration is always a great thing. And if you can figure out a way to do better with what you've got, then like, that's a great thing for the city too. And the job satisfaction, I'm glad that you really brought that up. I'm also sort of interested, I think, when it comes to job performance and my hope is that with this program is that and specifically at night, that folks are potentially getting called less and having to respond to less things. So, when I used to work at Eagle Fire, the first call, I could do a pretty good job in the evening. Second, not too bad. Third or fourth, like all of a sudden, I'm starting to show up pretty tired and I'm sure my performance is starting to lack a little bit. And so, my hope is specifically when people are sleeping that this gives people a more realistic ability to respond to the things that they need to do at a really, really high level and not necessarily be over responding to things that they don't.
And Council President Halliburton, that, that was actually one of our data points that we were looking at throughout the pilot is what is the workload now of, for example, Engine Five, Engine One, Engine Three? That's something we analyzed on the fire side as part of our data analysis that we'll produce in October, the end of October. The other thing we looked at is just availability. And I know Madam Mayor was at Station One when I first got hired, at a Station One visit to look at everything they do out of that one firehouse, foothills rescue, wildland fire, river rescue, and then our primary mission of fire response and EMS response. That's a big workload for three people in one house. That's a crew along with Engine Five that is up most of the night, almost every night. And so, one of the things we looked at was what's the availability now of a resource in that area to respond when Engine One might be on the river for five hours or six hours affecting rescues. And we found a lot of positivity in that. That'll be in the report as well.
I just, I just want to say a couple of things. I appreciate the collaboration. And so, I want to thank everybody that's here. The chief has invited me to some station visits the last couple of months and squads come up. Every time, it's been really interesting to hear the discussions about what's worked, what, what hasn't, but how it might be improved. And I say that because we, you know, when you first came on as chief, one of the things that I said was really important was that we figure out ways to collaborate and, and that we innovate where we can. And it was after years of hearing Elaine Clegg, when I was on the city council saying, there's got to be a better, more efficient way to do this. We got to be able to provide service, save some money, you know, not be moving such big trucks around if we don't have to, all the things. We don't want paramedics being called 17 to 19 times in a 24-hour shift either. But trying to figure this out and even you saying in, in our most recent station visit that But trying to figure this out and even you saying in, in our most recent station visit, that innovating and being nimble is important and appreciated when you were talking with our firefighters. I appreciate, and I know that our residents will ultimately too. So I really look forward to seeing the paper. Love that you all tried something new. I should be looking over here too. Love that you tried something new in response to suggestions and interests that we had. And believe that out of it, something better, like a process that's better for residents and for our first responders will come. And so I'm glad we got the preview, but really look forward, I think we all do to the white paper.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And thank you and your team. Thank you to Ada County Paramedics for joining in with our fire department. Thanks, guys. All right, we got one more. Wait, I might have, no, yes. Christine is back with an update after our work session on graffiti abatement.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council. Christine Miller, your Deputy Chief of Staff. Happy to be back here with some updates on our progress on work to date with the proposed code and process changes for graffiti abatement. So just a recap of our discussion in July. We were asked as a team to, to look at our current graffiti response, bring back to you all some pain points and then ideas for moving forward. So just recapping that discussion, really the pain point I believe we are experiencing is that the city lacks an abatement process or options for cleaning up property when a private property owner is unresponsive or unable to conduct that cleanup on their own. And so really our goals and challenge, I think that you all presented to us was how do we do a better job making sure that graffiti is documented and cleaned up quickly? And how do we create a new process and way of working that allows us to share ownership and responsibility with the community on this? So staff took back your requests, your ideas that you have. And we are proposing the following changes. So when we dug into it, the code change that we need to make actually is relatively minor. On advice from legal, it looks like really what we need to do is adopt the state's Title 18 definition of graffiti into our nuisance code. So that's a relatively minor code change. And once we dug deeper into it, it really was the behind the scene process that is going to see the bigger changes. And so staff has done over the summer, a good job working on how to figure that out. The process that we are proposing, BPD, the police would still make the initial contact. So reports of graffiti would still come into police as they do now. And we're going to equip the team that responds to those with some, some handouts and information for folks saying, hey, can you join us in achieving this goal of getting graffiti cleaned up within 48 hours? And if on making that contact, the person says, gosh, I don't think I can. We then will have an offer to assist in that cleanup and that abatement. At that point, we are proposing then a BPD team would make a handoff to our code compliance team, which the, the code change allows us to do. And that team is, is well-versed in handling items like this. So we have abatement process already for folks with weeds or other nuisances. And so we'd like to utilize that same process, that same bit of the code to apply that. We're either, we're having trouble locating an owner or the owner cannot or is like, no, I would just prefer somebody else take care of this for us. So at a high level, those are the changes that staff is proposing. Relatively minor change to the code, more substantial kind of change to our, our business process and our, the resident service we're able to provide. We heard loud and clear last work session that you all were interested in a one-year evaluation and that you all were interested in the city, setting aside a fund of money to address this for year one. And so in year one, we have identified some one-time city funding to set aside where we can study this code change. During that time, we do not intend to assess any fees like we would with our weed abatement if we do go in and do the cleanup. Staff is prepared to monitor those goals that we set out. Are we getting, you know, that faster cleanup that we were hoping to? Is this, is the community joining us in this effort? Are we seeing success in meeting those goals? And then we're committed to coming back after one year to see if that all worked as we proposed. What was the financial impact? Are there any additional changes we would suggest? Or if you all are hearing or seeing anything that we think we could make additional fine tuning to that. And so our next steps, we do have, it, it may be the least exciting and smallest ordinance change you've seen in some time. But we do have a draft ordinance ready to bring back to you all at your next meeting on the 12th. We have put together a plan for outreach to partners so we can request their help in meeting these cleanup goals and/or establish some access agreements and ways if they say, no, we would prefer you just take care of it for us. Make sure that we have an agreement in place so that we can do that. And then we'll begin collecting data and preparing for that one year of evaluation. I was zipped right through that and I am more than happy for questions or additional feedback.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I really appreciate you coming back and bringing this forward. This may be a very silly question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. I, I'm just curious if there's anything that we should be thinking about in terms of incentives for ensuring the community will help us along the way? Even something very similar, very small and minor that is, I don't know, gold star for being willing to engage? Because I can see it differently, right? From a, from a community member about weeds versus a viewpoint that this is vandalism and this is something that the city should take care of because this is a crime as opposed to something that I, as a community member, should pay for to repaint or do all those things. And I'm just curious if there, and when we have BPD out there, is there some kind of tone or language or support, something that encourages the community to join with us to do this as opposed to just, we'd love for you to do it and if not, we'll take care of it. I guess I'm just curious about your approach on that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Haney Keith, that's a great idea. No one has thought of that to date. So I would love to take that back to the group and generate some ideas for how to do that. That was not something we had thought of, so appreciate that. Thank you. I, I like the graffiti gold star. We might just run with that.
Madam Mayor, if there are no other questions, this is labeled as information only, but it may be appropriate to actually make a motion to move it to the next available reading calendar on September 12th. So I would move that we move the ordinance to the next available reading calendar on September 12th for the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? I'll just say I appreciate the work on this since you got feedback. And this is designed to give us the tools to help those that are victims of graffiti and more quickly. And appreciate how it's put together to do that. And then yes, we'll know so much more in a year and then determine if there are things we got to tweak or really the extent of the cost of doing the program in a new and different way.
Madam Mayor, if I could maybe just make one more comment. I do appreciate the opportunity to revisit this year from now, because I do think it will be a great opportunity for businesses, other folks to reach out to the city to provide that input. It will be really important that they do that during this period so that we can make sure that we know how it's working. It's working well. And certainly I think like Councilmember Haney Keith brought up, exploring ways to highlight incentivize, encourage folks who are doing it on their own to continue to do that and for us as a city to make it easier. So I appreciate that opportunity a year from now.
All right, clerk, you call the roll? Haney Keith?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Halliburton?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
So we way overestimated the time. I'm sorry, I was just looking at the clock and trying to figure out if I was reading the clock wrong today. I'm surprised everybody, we got you out of work an hour early, so you get a free hour.
For fast-talking fire chief.
All right. We are, we'll go ahead and recess till six o'clock, which is a little over an hour, a little under an hour and a half from now. Thank you.